Turn it on as well, there you go.
Welcome to the May twenty ninth, twenty twenty four planning board meeting. May.
Nine. You said the twenty ninth.
May ninth. First agenda, our chairman is out tonight, so I'm the vice chair will be assuming his duties. And we're missing him.
I guess that's it.
So point Jack media is a. We'll remember that night. First any agenda is a conceptual meeting for Raymond Johnson. For Whitetail Lane and the commercial zone.
Right here.
This is a. Get up and state your name and.
My name is Raymond Johnson.
Okay, these microphones are pretty, pretty sensitive, you don't need to speak into all of them.
Okay. I'm Raymond Johnson, I own a piece of property at thirty two Whitetail Lane. And I'm in the process of building a Morton building, it's already up and approved by the, Mr. Shepherd, I believe. Came down to four twenty five, twenty four. And. Worked it over. I was very satisfied with it. The Morton guys were there. He passed this structural in. As far as the framing and insulation. And mentioned to me that I had to come up here. And apply for a building permit for a petition. Now, I understand. Those condos are approved for five units. I really wanna fit, you know, tone mine down to two. And I was told I had to. Come before the planning board in order to get the planning board to approve whatever we need to get done here.
Okay. Is the. The petition you wanna build, is it going with one of the four petitions would have gone?
Excuse me? Yeah, you got your.
Sure, it's a, it was a five unit building.
Five unit building, approved.
There were four interior walls, interior petitions.
I wanna put one interior wall.
Right, is it, is it in location of one of those four that were gonna be in there is, or you?
It's gonna be midway, I actually. Mr. Shepherd. Explained to me, make a little draft, get some, get some numbers. Chris the builder from Morton helped me out, okay, and he suggested I come up here with a draft. And you have a copy of this, I left it with the planning board, girls. This is the same copy right here. If you don't mind me stepping up.
Uh, sure, yeah, great.
The building is on the other side.
Yeah, so you're putting that almost in the middle, fifty four feet, fifty two feet?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, we approve that as a, what, five, five buildings in there?
Yes.
Five, five, five units each.
Right.
Right, and that's the fifth building?
Excuse me?
Is that the final building going up in there?
As far as, well, I own two or two or lots.
But that's only one of them.
This is one of them, this is thirty two. Right, I don't think I'm, I wanna build another one now. In all honesty. I mean, down the road, if something happens to me, my daughter gets it, okay? She can do what she wants, but. My suggestion and my will, do not build another building, that's all. It's range of pockets. To say the least, I mean. Whatever, I mean, you know, it is what it is.
I mean.
The petition basically, I, you know, I was talking to my friend of mine who's gonna help me, his name is Donnie Hope. He has built some stuff up here before, he knows what he's doing, he built his brother's house on Riverdale Road. Billy. He's a good guy, he actually helped us do a lot of the work down there as far as digging the holes for the footing, the foundation. That'll help us, help me with the contracting, guy knows his stuff. He mentioned to me that we wanna build a two by six insulated petition. And, and I talked to him first and when I talked to Chris, I said, let's go midway. And he drafted this up for me, showing me where the, you know, the center stud is.
Yep.
And, and that's just where I'm at. So, right now it's at a standstill, and I'd like to get it going. The plumbers that did his thing, he basically finished today. Would wait for inspection, which is like two weeks out. The other bad news I got from the girl in the, in the. In, in the. Committee office here this afternoon was I need a state approved septic design. Well, that's a turnkey operation, already state approved.
You know, the system's already built, they built that before they built any buildings, they're all good with that.
Exactly.
Part of the site, the whole site plan?
The plan is, the master plan signed by the state is somewhere in this town hall.
Yeah, it is.
And I, I don't, why am I getting some bad, some bad vibes?
We know, we know you don't need that, we'll, we'll, we'll get her, we'll get her on the right path on that.
Thank you.
The, um, the building's in the same plot it was supposed to be at on the site plan, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's the only thing we care about, is you put it in the right place.
It's, it's in the exact perfect spot, okay? The surveyors came out, did, did their pinning, okay? I made sure everything was precise, they checked it once, twice, three times, it said, you're go. All right, this from the cellar dweller, did his thing, said it's perfect. I mean. As far as. Digging, trenching, he said it's probably the best site he's ever been on, we had it all perfect, let me there, not to tweak anything. He came in, put his, put his forms down, bingo, the concrete showed up, walls went up perfect, everything lined up perfect for Morton. Morton said it's probably one of the best sites they were on too, saw it as a rock, no, nobody gets stuck, I helped him out. I mean.
Okay, sir.
We just wanna move on here, we wanna get this building.
Yeah, I think we're all set. The, um, if the building's the right spot, that's what.
It's perfect.
I mean, they'll go with that, he's not adding units.
No.
I mean, I don't.
Wanna tone it down, too much traffic in there already.
I, I don't think there's anything we need to do, I mean, we're not gonna. We do a site plan to.
No, we don't.
Cause we don't feel the entire side of the building anyway, it's not part of the site plan.
The only question is, is. You all wanna come down, I'll, I'll take you down there.
That, that is, I'm sure it's on the existing plan, if, if that's required, that's required. The only thing you might wanna look at is, look at that site plan that we did approve. And see if those commizing walls need to be fire rated.
The separation wall between the two units.
See if they, see if it needs to be fire rated, if those.
We're gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna get whatever, whatever the best stuff I would, there is.
You gotta look at that plan to see, to see what that requires.
So, what you're saying is if we get a fire retardant? That dividing wall may have to be fired. Okay.
Yeah, and the building, the building, yeah.
Well, we meant insulated, and sound insulated too. But if. Always meet the fire code, so just make sure. Who would know that, Morton?
No, you're gonna wanna talk to the building inspector when he comes in. Don't not.
You mean Mr. Shepherd down there in Goffstown?
Don't talk on there though, that's not, he's gotta talk to while he's here.
Is he here?
No, he's not here right now, but you have to come in, you have to find out when he's here, make an appointment to see him here.
Okay.
You can't go see him in Goffstown, that's it, he's not.
I, I know that.
He's bored for us when he's in Goff.
I, I know that, you, what, two hours at, four hours or something for the, every Thursday?
Make, make your way with the girls and, and meet him here.
Okay, will do.
And, um. And we'll tell you that you don't need any appro, you don't need to come back here, you don't need, there's no, there's nothing the planning board needs to do. As long as the building is in the right spot per the site plan.
It's perfect.
Then we're okay.
It's precise.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have it any other way.
That's all that matters to us.
We wouldn't wanna pick it up and move it.
Yeah. That's all that matters to us, I'm sure we're okay if we need the right alert to the building inspector or whatever, we'll, we'll take care of it.
How are you doing as far as a building inspector here permanent? Have you found one yet?
Not yet, it's a slow, it's a process, we're not involved with it, we're just the planning board.
Trust me, I understand, I own trucks, I know it helps like, hard to get it, are we all set?
Yeah.
I guess to partially answer that question, we have on our selectmen's agenda Monday to review. Naomi, how many?
Twenty eight.
Eight applications so far, so. Hopefully, yeah, hopefully we'll narrow it down to, we're, we're talking maybe three candidates, then do some interviews in the next, you know, next little bit after that. But. We have some applicants, so it's hopeful.
That's, that's a positive thing. We're all set, we're good, we're good.
How long will it take to get an answer, just out of curiosity? Or an approval?
We, you don't need approval from us, we, we, we'll just.
You're all set.
We'll talk, I'll talk to the girl in the office.
Okay. Do I have to come up and, and, and purchase a new permit for this?
No, well, I need to get a building permit for the wall.
For the wall?
Right.
Okay.
But that's, that's.
I already, let me ask you something, I just spent twenty two hundred dollars for the building.
You should be all set, you already got a building permit for the whole building, right?
Right there.
Yeah, then it should be fine.
You're gonna have to have it inspected before you insulate and cover it.
Okay.
But you wanna talk to the building inspector about the fire code requirements.
I will. And when can I speak to him, any idea?
You have to make an appointment.
Oh, I've gotta call and make an appointment?
Yep.
And meet him here?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you all.
He's coming for your plumbing inspection anyways, isn't he?
Uh, Mike is all. Yes, I called today and she said that I think it's the twenty seventh, that's long for that.
Look at it then. Have him look at it then.
Thank you. Sorry, I've got bad hearing.
Sorry.
I apologize. You can speak as loud as you want, it's, it's, it's better. You got it?
That's it.
Have a good day.
Thanks. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time.
Next agenda is conceptual hearing for Thomas Birch. For in the IRA zone. Proposing a wildlife pond.
I brought a stand to present those, or is it like me to put that there or?
Yeah, and it'd be on the camera that way too.
All right. Your. Jason Bolduc from Rury Land Services.
Okay.
Does that work for everyone?
Now, before you get started. This is a. Conceptual meeting.
Correct.
Nothing anybody says here is cast on stone by anybody. Um, I mean, it's just a general discussion about what you're doing and. Your, your need to even. Come here for what you're proposing.
Yes, main goal is to see what, if, what we would need if anything from the town to, to do the construction of this.
And I just wanna make it clear, if I. Assuming that some of you folks are here for, because of this. Because this is a conceptual, there were no butter notices sent out. So, nobody was shortchanged by not getting a butter notices, we don't send out a butter notices for conceptual hearings. And I will give you all a chance to speak, but we're not gonna engage in the conversation. If, if it moves forward, then there'll be time for that.
Can we ask questions?
We're, we're not obligated to answer because this is only a conceptual, I mean, what we say today may not be what comes in tomorrow. There's, there's no, there's no.
But if we have clarifying questions about this from this gentleman, can we ask him or no?
I wish you would do that out in the hall.
Okay.
This really isn't the, isn't the forum to do that at this point yet.
Okay.
We'll, we'll get there, but we're, we're not there yet. That's why there were no butter notices sent out because. It's only a discussion to find out what, what they're looking to do and usually have questions for us about. Generally what we're gonna require. There's no specifics that anybody is, is, has to live by.
Does the town, do you guys act in an advisory role or do you eventually have to permit this?
We don't even know that yet.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna get to that maybe tonight.
Okay.
To figure that out.
Do you mind if I add one, one thing? Just on top of what you've said, I watched the, the conservation meeting yesterday, our, excuse me, our town administrator said something I thought was very helpful. That because we don't have a building inspector right now, we don't have a code enforcement officer right now, it's sort of, this is, this is atypical, and that's why this is happening. Normally, that initial step would happen with one of them, so I thought that was just worth repeating here. It, like, when we hire for those roles, this type of meeting would not be happening. That's it, thank you.
All right, my name is Jason Bolduc from Rury Land Services, representing Thomas Birch. The owner of map four eleven, lot three, three eight off of Buxton School Road. He purchased the property about six months ago and is essentially looking to construct a wildlife pond. Currently, we sent an application into the state and of which. He brothers got, that's where they got the notifications, was on the state level. So, the property abouts Buxton School Road. And around two sections along the southern and northern end. And there's Peacock Brook that runs through the center of it. And you can see that here in blue. And the wetland, Palestry and Wetland Edge is up here. And so we're at least a hundred feet off the road. And therefore, will be difficult to see from the road. And this is what we're looking to do, is essentially construct the wildlife pond down in the Palestry and Wetland Edge. And maintain at least eighty feet to Peacock Brook. I have told Thomas that there's, we do not run a touch anything to do with the brook, which is a higher value wetland.
I don't think Peacock Brook is a. Shoreline protected.
It is not, no.
It's one class lower than needs to be for that, right?
Correct, so, everything we're doing is away from the brook, and I even told him that anything that you have on the other side. You would need a permit to even get across it, and that would be basically an uphill battle. So, he, and the reason we chose this spot is, it's the flattest area that receives. That would be suitable for a pond. If you go north on Buxton School Road, it's fairly steep coming right off the road down, and then it basically goes right to Peacock Brook, so we make a good spot for the brook.
Okay, so. Hold it there for a minute.
Yep.
Some questions come to mind, I'm, I'm trying to, in my mind, I think the board needs to, trying to figure out. If the planning board needs to weigh in on this at all.
So, that's my question is, do I need any sort of local relief or?
Well, so I gotta ask you some questions to help try to determine that, I guess.
Okay.
Is this gonna be open to the public?
No.
Are you gonna have parking lot down there?
That's his intention, at this point, there's no structures going up, as far as buildings that we're proposing. Essentially, he's responsible for trout fishing and, and.
No power down there, no electrical power, no utilities?
Nope, not, not at this time. He's essentially responsible upon go trout fishing in.
It's gonna be for him to go trout fishing, it's not gonna be open to the public, right?
No, nope, private property.
I'm not sure that we need.
I think it's EPS.
Clarifying. So, just on the, the last page here, it says, there's a, there's a spot where it says there's a proposed pump location?
So, that's for construction. So, when they excavate down, they need a de-watering system, which is essentially that. This area up here, so these are the two low points. So, while they're digging down, they are gonna have to pump up to what's called a dirt bag essentially, as it fills up. And lets the water bleed out, but collects all the sediment so that that doesn't then run.
It'll be like a diesel power pump while they're building it?
Essentially, yep, and that's all to be surrounded by sanitation control, the stop power to be surrounded by sanitation control. And I was gonna recommend to him having us lay that out from a survey crew.
One thing I would recommend. You're gonna be down there and all, sound's gonna travel. I don't think we're gonna have anything to say about this, but it would be, help these folks out a lot and if you could. Put on there that he use a low decibel pump?
I can recommend it.
You don't want some nineteen fifty vintage pump down there with the Cummins on it that.
Gone at six in the morning, yeah, I would not want that either. Um, I can suggest it to him, the state's already, um, it's already at the state, so that would have to be requested by the town. And I can certainly let him know when I talk to him tomorrow.
Sounds like that's gonna be probably his biggest thorn, cause he's gonna be running that corner all his day to keep the water out.
Uh, it would mostly just be down when they're excavating, I would imagine.
Big water though, and they gotta excavate more, that's not gonna be enough, he's gonna keep it running.
True, yeah.
And this, right now, in the ground, if he was doing that now, he'd be into big water.
Yeah.
The high water, the high, the water level is high right now.
So, I have a note for work to be conducted during a dry time of year. So, this is not the time of year to be building a pond. It would have to be, I, I always recommend that people do it in August. With no rain in the immediate forecast if they can.
But in regards to the need to come to the planning board. I don't believe we'll.
I have questions and you'll know the answer. Does the state look at, uh, how does this affect connected wetlands?
Oh, yeah, they look at connected wetlands.
Flooding of neighboring parcels and what's the impact on the aquifer potentially?
On something like that, they certainly.
That's all at the state?
Yeah.
So, I've already had an open discussion with the reviewer, Jessica Schultz at the state. Regarding her, her, a few of her items. This is essentially an enhancement project, so we're taking a forested wetland and we're trying, recreating a. More of a lake habitat, an emergent wetland habitat, so we're enhancing the wetland that's currently there, which is the intent of the project. To create biodiversity on the property as to what's currently there. So, for, and then, so we have multiple plantings going in, and as far as flooding goes, it's gonna aid in that because now we're excavating down. A huge flood storage area.
This is at the state level, I'm not here, that's at the state level, that was my question, I, this is mine, now I understand, I know, I have to answer that question.
How many yards you estimate are coming out of it?
I'd have to do the math on that, I don't know off the top of my head.
Is it staying on site, or are you trucking off?
He has not clarified whether it's gonna stay on site, I would assume that some of it would stay on site, but most of it would be removed. So, I can tell him, I'll let him know about that, if it's removed from the property.
Well, the selectman handle that one. Got my note. What do you think, Chuck?
Fine with me.
Yeah. I don't think there's anything for us to.
Nothing on the local?
Our site plan, there's no reason. Throwing you at us, so.
Okay, so from the town's perspective, the state's issues department.
The conservation commission really ought to get in on it.
So, I guess that's what I'm asking from here is.
That's not us, I mean, they're a totally separate entity than us.
Well, the intent of the meeting today was to determine whether we would need a special exception, a variance, go to the conservation.
Buffer for the, you need a variance for the buffer, which is zoning.
Okay.
The, the planning board, we, we, we've toyed with the idea of making it by. Conditional use, but we haven't got that far yet, so it's all, it's all zoning and conservation.
So, it'd be a zoning board meeting?
Right.
And first cons come.
Right.
Okay. All right, those are the answers I was looking for.
And then the selectman with the excavation permit.
Okay, if it's being removed.
Yeah, we've got a. Earth products, which essentially, I think, well, five thousand yards going offsite, falls in.
Okay, and I'm sure that's gonna be determined when they do the, when he meets his contractor, whoever he decides to use.
If they can lose on site, building, building up areas or whatever, that's, you know.
They can do that.
Right.
Stay out of buffer.
Right.
All right, I guess that's my answer for that one.
Just that, if you don't mind sticking around for a few minutes, I'll definitely let these people speak, I mean, I think now, we're gonna give them organized chance to speak and. Last night you weren't at that meeting, at the conservation commission meeting, so they. And the conservation commission didn't know much about it.
Okay.
So, they weren't getting much, if any, for answers. So, I, what I wanna do is I'll let them speak here, but I really don't wanna get into a debate here because it's really not our purview.
Yeah, cause it's gonna go in front of the cons come and the zoning.
But if you don't mind, it would be nice if you could maybe talk them up in the parking lot after they ask their questions here.
Yeah. Is that fine with you guys? Stick around after for a little bit.
Yeah.
All right.
That'd be great, I can't, I mean, I can't make you do it, obviously, but I'm just asking. I can't, I mean, I can't make you do it, obviously, but I'm just asking.
No, that's fine, I got the answers I was looking for.
Okay, I'm gonna get the, unnotified, a bonus, chance to speak? Would, you, please state your name and...
Sure. I'm Brenda Lashway, I live at one oh seven Buxton School Road, so, my property is right where, there's a lot of, um, Peacock Brook that goes through Mr. Birch's property, and then my property is where it feeds into, and it's just...
So, so you're south of him?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, just south of him, at the base of, that's all of, that's all the steepness, down to me. Um, so, I've just got a little tiny bit of the brook, but from me, everybody past me, who weren't official butters, um, would, could potentially be affected, is my, is my fear, um, because it, like, past me, there's just so many people who have water, wetlands, little parts of the brook, little mini ponds, whatever, on their property, that if something happens to that little bit of my brook, which is directly near that, it would affect them, and I'm, I am concerned about that. Um, it's Peacock Brook, it's also part of the Piscataqua watershed, I consider it very important, um, piece of, of land, and, um, one of the large things this area does is it supports a lot of, um, beaver. There's, they're, um, very prevalent in that area, so it's a great, uh, wetlands for beaver, as well as just for water and brook and all. Um, so, yeah, I am kinda concerned about how, if it's coming, okay, so I was told by somebody, that if the water comes down the hill, it's gonna be fed by, by, basically by gravity, it'll be fed down into the pond, and that's how it's gonna continue, that's how it will be filled, and how it'll continue to stay filled. But what that brings to my question is, well, right now, the water that comes down from that hill goes directly into the wetlands, and into the brook, and feeds them, so now if it's being diverted into a pond area, to make that a, the first priority, I don't know if that, how, or if that would affect the, the, the lands either. Um, Mr. Birch has talked about wanting to diversify some of the plant life to attract more animals, he particularly has stated and written a number of times that he's very interested in having turkeys and deer in that area. I will contest, there are a lot of turkeys and deer already in that area, and if you just walk outside my house, from my house to his land, I can see footprints from deer right now. Um, so those are a couple of the animals he seemed to care about, he wants the, the trout in his pond, and said something about, um, hopefully attracting waterfall, so, waterfall fall, I've already seen a couple of waterfall that already live in the area just today. Um, but what he hasn't said anything about is, like, how this might impact possibly the beaver population out there, I don't know that, that doesn't seem to be one of the ones that he's been looking towards. Um, so, that's, big concern number one is the pond itself, I know that he, um, Justin and Mr. Birch have both stated that it's not gonna definitely affect the brook at all, and I would hope that to be the case, but it does seem like it's pretty close to me, so it's kinda hard to know for sure that that's, that it won't affect it. And then, the other part that's a concern to me, as the person who lives over here, is where they wanna build the access road, very close to my house, and there's just, it's pretty, it, the tree line's only a little bit of it there, and then most of the woods over there. So if that comes, that you come in with heavy machinery, driving down that length of an area, right at the base of a hill, where it's already really oftentimes dangerous going down Buxton School Road, at the base of that hill anyway, um, you know, as soon as there's bad weather, right there in front of my house, at the base of that hill is where the, the cars are all, all going off the road, drainage has been a constant problem in that area, the town's always trying to address that for us, and, um, keep that road passable. Um, I get some flooding in my basement, pretty much yearly, so without, with those trees being removed, with that fresh dirt, which has gotta be a sizable enough amount to allow big machinery to go back and forth, um, I'm concerned about the impact that that's gonna have on the land, on drainage into my yard, drainage down the road, into the next neighbor's yards, um, how it might affect the road itself, and the integrity of the road itself. Right now, if the bus is coming down, they've taken up the whole road, so then if you have them pulling in and out, and parking right there, um, that's my big, main concern, just the two, the, the pond itself, how it might affect the brook, and, um, the whole Piscataqua area, and the road, and how that and the placement of it at the base of the hill, the hill would affect us. Thank you for your time.
One thing brought up, if they put a driveway, if they're a roadway, you gotta go to the road agent to get approval, because it may not be where it shows on the plan, 'cause it has to follow through a line of sight and all that, so...
Alright, thank you.
That would be his Bailey Wick, and have to go see him.
Okay.
Just one thing about the...
He's still here. He's still here.
Did you get that, Jason, about the road agent for the driveway?
Yeah.
Like, an access to the roadway, so...
That'd have to be on, you know, he would have to pull that once we got all the approval.
Yeah, they have to go get, talk to him, get a permit and do that.
Yep, yep, this is just for the wetland impacts.
Yep, okay.
Next, somebody else wants to speak?
Um, so I do not own property anymore, my mother does, is it okay for me to speak on her behalf, she's out of town.
Yeah, keep it a little comment, yeah, public comment, and just get, gotta...
I just wanna be transparent, yeah. Uh, so, I grew up in where I've walked this land for a long time, there's already a pond on this property, and the new proposed pond is not that far from it, it's not like the existing pond is on one end of the property, the other one's on the opposite end, so I'm very confused why he needs to add another pond and fill in wetland to do that. Um, the proposal, which was read last night, it's, has a lot of flowery, flowery language in it, and it makes it sound like it's a deserted piece of land that he's trying to build a pond on, for altruistic reasons. It's, the land, the, the whole area is a very highly functioning ecosystem, there's lots of diversity, we have black bear, we have, uh, deer, we have the turkey coming through the yard, we, I see fox multiple times a year, bobcats, there's tons of diversity in this area, so I don't think it's necessary to amend it and add a pond. Um, I spoke to Tommy myself, and he said he's trying to fulfill a boyhood dream of fishing on a trout pond that he owns, um, so I don't really think that this project is intended to increase biodiversity in an area that's already pretty biodiverse, I think it's, I mean, I don't want to be judgmental, but kind of a selfish project that someone's trying to do to fulfill their own need. Um, and my mother has the same question, she said that since he bought the property, she's noticed fewer animals coming through her yard, um, he's been doing work down there, we hear the chainsaw going all the time, um, so I don't know what he's doing, I don't know if it's disrupting the beavers already, or other wildlife, but she, she's saying she's already seeing less in the area, um, and she's also worried about the aquifer and the flow of water, everything works harmoniously now, so how is that gonna impact things in the long run? So, that's all, I just, I'm on, I'm here on her behalf, but also someone who uses the land a lot, so...
Tell us who that is.
Corinne Bishop.
One of, she's at one oh one Buxton.
Yeah, I mean, there's other stuff, but since you guys aren't actually doing the permitting, I don't wanna hold you up, so, thank you.
Anybody else wants to speak?
Sorry, I got a knee replacement, a little slow here. Lori Davis, one eighteen Buxton School Road, my husband and I own the property across from it, our big concern is traffic, we're on a dirt road, and everybody knows this has been the most wonderful winter for creativity on the dirt roads this year. You put heavy equipment on this road, who's going to be responsible for building it up, putting drainage in, because both those houses are gonna get flooded out with this kind of equipment in there? Our big problem this year, from my point of view, was, we had, and Tommy and I have talked about it, so from my point, it's gonna be fixed with him, but when you have a truck parked on my side of the driveway road, 'cause I live right smack in the middle of that hill, and then you have it right where my mailbox is, I can't come down my driveway and turn into traffic, because that's blocked, and if somebody has a vehicle right past it, we couldn't get propane deliveries this year, because there were two vehicles here, and my propane people couldn't get in. I couldn't get mail delivered, because they want ten feet into the mailbox, and they want ten feet to get through the mailbox, and they didn't have that, so we were running to the post office all the time. But the bigger concern is that hill, it's not wide enough, you know, a lot of our dirt roads do have ditches to them, but that particular part of the hill is the narrowest part of that road, and when you come from the west down, they can't see coming west, what's down at the bottom of that hill. So if there's any kind of traffic there, we're gonna have a big problem, and we're gonna have a big problem with drainage and keeping that smooth, and I'm real curious if that's the town's responsibility, does Tommy have to pull a permit, or does he have to sign something where that he has to maintain and fix the road, what do you do for the culverts for them, because it's all gonna flood into their land, those are my concerns.
I can answer that briefly, um, if, if he's moving material out of there?
Mm-hmm.
And he needs to provide by the earth ordinance removal permit?
Okay.
The selectman will have a public hearing on that, because that's part of the process.
Okay.
'Cause that, that would be really the only traffic, you know, move the equipment in to work, and then move it out, it, it's a one-time shot, the, really, the traffic would be if he's moving material out of there, the traffic, and there'll be a public hearing and that with the selectman, if, that's the route he decides to go, if he wants to haul the material out.
Okay.
Um, you bring up valid points, and that, I think that would be the time to address it, because the selectman will have, they'll have the authority, the ability to address it with them then.
Okay.
The, the road agent will turn around and tell them that, you know, you're going to come onto the town road, you're gonna have to usually build up the aprons, apron, so it, it's not taking...
Is that Jason from Highway?
It'd be, he's the road agent, he'd be the superintendent, he'd be one in charge of whether or not they need to put a culvert in there, he'll, they have to go through, and how wide it's gonna be in the line of sight, so, so they can pull out safely in and out.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anybody else? Okay. Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
You wanna?
I want next as well, so...
Okay. Do you have anything else on this, or you're, you're good now?
I'm all set, um, sounds like I'm going, coming back for cons come and zoning, so...
Our next hearing is on, um, it probably won't take too long, if you guys just wanna wait outside, he'll be out.
Thank you.
Ronald C. and Jacqueline S. Perrin, on Dudley Brook Road. Have a restoration plan for EPS violation?
Just read the letter here, see if there's anything... Uh, my name is Jason Lulick again, representing Ronald and Jacqueline Perron, and, again, we're looking to see what sort of permitting we would need through the state, or, uh, through the town and relief. Um, it's essentially a three-pronged project, um, currently, there is an existing, uh, unpermitted road that goes through this wetland area, so this is the wetland area here, and they constructed the road down to there. Currently, they have a seasonal assist order from the town, and they also have an approved restoration plan from the state to remove all of this material, and they have it, it has to be done by a certain date. Um, so that is all being addressed through the state, in order for them to start the restoration, however, they need the seasonal assist to be lifted, in order for them to start the restoration work.
Okay, um, again, I think they're gonna need to go to ZBA for a little buffer...
Buffer impacts. So, looking through the ordinance, it looks like, uh, access ways would be done under a special exception?
It's still ZBA though, yep.
It should be ZBA, but it was, it's special exception, not variance. Okay, that was essentially one, that was the first item, because what they'd like to do... Is to reroute that access way around the well, but within the buffer. To essentially, and then, what they'd like to do is construct a gazebo down in the buffer area, outside the building, uh, setback?
It's for residential purposes, right?
Uh, yes. It would be the, a gazebo for...
It's acc- accessory...
Accessory dwelling, or not dwelling, uh, special structure.
Except for, to their, to their residential problem.
So, yes, so we're, and it's already been permitting through the state, um, because we had to do a shoreline permit in order to get this, um, approved through the state, so we said we might as well throw in the gazebo, um, and see what it would need to be through the, through the, uh, town. So the question today is, would the gazebo also be, fall under that special exception or variance?
Well, is it, that lot hasn't changed, right, the lot configuration hasn't changed?
No, it predates the, the ordinance, um...
So, so, so the only thing to deal with, if it predates the ordinance, the only thing, the only thing you're dealing with is the buffer.
Is the buffer.
There's no building setback from it, because any lots, it would create prior to that fifty-foot building setback requirement from wetlands, that didn't apply.
Okay, so it's still following...
So, it's, the only thing you're into is the buffer.
So it'd still be all a special, those two items would be special exception?
Yeah, there's only one, it's a special exception for the buffer, for, actually, the road, it like gazebo, so...
All impacts within the buffer, essentially. And, the third item would be a perched beach down by the Horace Lake, we have not, um, sought a wetlands permit for that, um, essentially, we're looking to see if the town would entertain having a perched beach down by the, by the lake.
I know a few of them have gone in down there.
They have in?
They have.
Okay, so I...
You're not the first one.
That's always a good thing. Um, okay, so it would be something that the town has permitted in the past?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and that's strictly with the, with the wetland permitting, um, and again, with the...
Because that would also be a twenty-five foot?
With the buffer, right.
That would also, all three of those items would fall underneath the... That would also, all three of those items would fall underneath the special exception.
Right.
Okay. That was all.
Actually, the, um, the gazebo and the perched beach wouldn't, that's a variance because that's not a roadway. Roadway is a special exception because it's a roadway.
Okay, so the perched beach and gazebo would be a, a variance. Okay. Alright, those are the answers of.
I mean, how closely wanna get to the waterline with the perched beach?
Uh, we haven't really, I'm assuming within twenty-five feet. It's gonna be within that. And either, in that, at the end of the day, you're still within twenty-five feet of these two wetland areas and this wetland area.
Okay.
So either way, it would be within the buffer. But that answers those three items. That would be all.
Who gave the cease and desist of the road that we could restore? Will you come from the state or the town?
Town, uh, looks like Tony.
So you'd have to go to the zoning anyway to get that put together.
Even if they wanted to start the restoration, let's just say tomorrow to remove all that, they still have to go to zoning.
Yeah, the problem is if you gotta do any more work in the buffer, you really need to, at least for the roadway, you need that, that's a special exception.
Okay.
So you might wanna do it super, you might wanna go, obviously, you can apply for them all at once. But you're gonna, it's gonna be two different applications because one's gonna be a special exception, one's gonna be a variance.
Okay, so in order for them to, because they do have a deadline from the state to have the restoration complete.
What is the deadline?
The twentieth of June, so.
You'll have, you'll make, I mean, it looks like you have all the paperwork you need, you need to fill out the application. And the meeting is the first Tuesday of the month?
Yeah, the application deadline is Monday.
And that would be the completion of the restoration though, so.
If you get into the office over here Monday and apply for everything and get on the zoning for the.
But the meeting would be June fourth.
June fourth.
June fourth, and then I have.
Yeah, with Z B A, then you'd be.
Fourteen days to completely redo the, is there any way around lifting that? Or you have to go to Z B A to lift a cease and desist for?
They're the ones that have to do it, had to do it.
We don't have a county anymore.
We don't have a building inspector, so.
Okay.
I mean, the other thing is to get a hold of D E S, see if they give you an extension.
The town. Yeah.
So they should be, they should do that, they, it would be the first time.
No, it wouldn't be the first time. No, I will, alright, I will report back for that. So the two zoning variances would be to remove already existing fill within a wetland. And then for the gazebo and the beach, and then special exceptions just for the road.
And the only variance actually is for the buffer. You don't need a variance because of the wetlands problem.
Well, that, that's what they're restoring would be all the work that they did in the wetland.
Right, but the, the buffer encroachment is, in the town's purview, what you need the, the variant, the special exception or variance for.
Okay.
We don't have anything, but once you get through that buffer, which is in the wetlands, that's, that's a state problem.
Okay, so if they were to do the restoration.
If, if they could.
Cause that.
If it's not the restoration, leave the buffer alone, well, leave what, you know, the part of the buffer they've already impinged on. You know, keep the work within that area, then. You're not, you're not hitting any more of the buffer in the process. If that's possible.
Yeah, I'm just reading the. So, I just wanna make sure what you're saying works with this, works with that. Because. What I assume you do is come down, back a truck down and just start removing it. And into the truck and out of, out of there.
Yeah, what he's saying here is, is because you were in the setback of the wetlands, he's got fifty feet, that's twenty-five feet. And the vegetation on the immediate shoreline, which is in the buffer. So this is all about disturbing the buffer, not actually filling wetlands.
So as long as they're within the wetlands, they're, they're fine to, to restore. Because that's the purview of the state, they don't have a buffer, so everything's from the jurisdiction.
That's why they don't have a buffer, because the state.
Okay. Yep. So, okay, so I can say that they're good to go with that, but as far as cleaning up the buffer.
And he's got on here the fifty-foot setback and it's, it's twenty-five because that's a grandfather lot prior to that.
Ordinance.
Place that it's.
Okay. Alrighty. I think that's all.
Okay.
I'll just meet on Monday very busy.
Thank you. Nobody here to speak on, caught one of this thing? That's our conceptual meetings, hearings. We got something else here, the voluntary merger application? So in the way these voluntary mergers work, some, some of them are just a voluntary merger. I mean, it, it comes to the plan more as a courtesy than anything. If somebody wants to voluntarily merge, you can watch together and they fill out the paperwork. The only thing we really check is make sure that the bank is the post do it. Sometimes you do that, you have two different mortgages on, two different lots in the banks, throw hissy clips if you have to.
They don't pay on loans, that's a.
Yeah, all of a sudden.
Pizza lesson.
Yeah. Makes it harder for clothes on it. I saw something in here about the. Oh, oh, there's a couple of D and A. Was there anything about the bank on that, Naomi?
On the back, the application, they signed this whole one.
Okay. No, that makes it easy.
Move, we accept them with voluntary merger of Tax Map four oh seven sixty-four and four oh seven sixty-five. Merge to be four oh seven sixty-four in its entirety. Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
I oppose.
Attention.
I'll sign that at the end. Mr. Chairman, question, a question.
Sure.
What is a perched beach?
It's when they, the, the beach doesn't actually go to the water. They go to a retaining wall, like just before they empty the water. And they fill behind it full of sand, so they put their beach chairs and stuff in it. But it's not, it's not, it doesn't just go into the water. Yeah, there's a couple on the other side of the lake.
It's a sandbox.
Yeah, pretty much a sandbox. Close, close to the water, but not in it.
High price sandbox.
And D E S likes those because they don't impact wetlands. But they're.
Except for the potato wall.
Yeah, but the, the idea is that retaining wall is out of the well, the jurisdiction, jurisdiction of wetlands. But it's all, because it's right there, it's all in the buffer. Next on the agenda is master plan. Anybody have a guest to go through everything and?
Well, my initial thoughts were, before we go choosing, picking and choosing questions. We need to ask what we want to be part of it. So according to RSA six seventy-four two. At minimum, it has to have a vision section and a land use section. And then everything else is may. Master plan may include transportation, community facilities, economic development, natural resources. Hazard, natural hazards, recreation, utility and public service. Section identifies cultural, archaeological, historic, regional concern. Which in the last one, that was our concern about what was going on with the junction of Wallace Road and Mas Road. Oh, no, it was the potential rotary downtown. Neighborhood plan, community design, housing, implementation section, energy section, coastal management. We don't have coastal management unless we're managing Horace Lake.
Not like that, yeah.
Not like that. So, in our.
And the transportation section is kind of.
Right, so.
Not as much effort either because you don't have any.
So when we looked at our previous master plan questionnaire, there's a responded profile. Transportation, general issues, community facilities and services, land use and growth management. Natural resources, economic development, housing, zoning. Vision goals and objectives of those major categories.
I have a suggestion for, I don't know where this may go in an existing category. But I think it would be helpful. To know, do you leave town to go to work? How many days a week? What's your one-way commute, ten miles or less, ten to twenty-five?
I've got a, I've got idea on that.
What's your job description?
The, you don't ask, preface this by saying, you don't wanna ask too many questions because you'll lose people's attention and their, their willingness to fill this thing out real fast. So. I'm thinking. We may have to like split it in half and do one series of questions and then six months later do another series of questions. And kind of keep the, you know, keeping two, whatever the subjects are of those questions, we'd be totally separate. You know, we could put a link or something in the, when the tax bill score, alright? Anything we could do at all with utilizing that mailing that comes out already with the tax bills?
It'll involve the week.
We're not gonna make it, obviously, for that. So, I mean, thank you, it's six months to, for the next tax bill to go. But, and, and I really like to keep it under twenty questions, please. Question, questionnaire?
Well, the last one, we had twenty-eight questions. The plan, the questionnaire that I like is the Stratford one. It just gives you a good visual response. But it helps us to answer some of those questions that any changes to ask. But then the other, the other part of the puzzle is that we also have demographic information that the state puts out from our town. That will tell us, right now, it's eighty percent of the people work out of town. So.
It's definitely get that way, we don't need to ask questions about.
Correct. So, I mean, not, I mean, yes, some specific is to have time travel and all that type of thing would be helpful.
I think it would be helpful also on a planning perspective to know what, what they're going to do.
Right.
Is any of that, can any of that be here in town to provide work for people? And also some tax base for the town that's not residential or necessarily retail commercial.
We could tailor a couple of questions to be commercially generated, seeing what kind of commercial uses would you like to see in town? And maybe list off a half dozen options and leave them blank to fill in one.
Look, we don't know where they're going to work, how do we know which options to give them?
We don't, that's all that little blank so that they can fill in one.
Other.
Right.
You know, I, I think, you know, I find there's a lot of home-based businesses in town.
No, I know you are.
Yeah, but eighty percent of the folks go to work elsewhere, according to the demographic information the state has for where.
Right.
But that, that pre-COVID too, I'm sure, any demographics the state has is gonna be pre-COVID.
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty, they, they make that, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Bruce, sharing your, your idea about including anything in the tax bill, it's a real negative time. Seriously, I, I mean, I don't know the whole plan. Just because of that.
I mean, I think, we're not gonna, I don't think we need to put the questionnaire in the tax bill. I think we need to put some kind of a notice in there, saying, look out, we're gonna do a Q R code like at the bulletin board in front of the town hall. In, in the town hall here, in the, in the town office. And we'll get it out on the town website so that they can activate the, the survey monkey to, to do the questionnaire. But I think in the tax, we're not gonna send the questionnaire in the tax bill itself. I think we're just gonna put a notice in there saying, we're in the process of doing this, you have to look out for and describe what. Just to put people on notice, to be, it's, you know, and it's a free way to get it out to everybody. You know, essentially.
Yeah, I think Chuck's right on that, when you put that in there, people wanna take the tax bill, throw it away, they'll see that, they'll definitely throw that one away. This is gonna cost me more money, yeah, that's.
I don't know if it's something you could maybe. D I R probably won't print anything on the tax bill itself, right? No, I didn't think so.
And I think if there's anything you wanted, we'd have to decide that right now so that the, selectmen, we could decide next Monday. Cause you said they go out, what day next week?
Yeah, it's not gonna happen.
It's not gonna happen Monday.
Well, but if you're saying.
It'll be somewhere.
Yeah, but, okay, I thought you were saying, hey, keep an eye out.
Yeah, I don't think we'll have that, I think we're, we're gonna go out next week, we're not.
No, we're gonna sign the warrant, then we have to get the D R A, then we can print, and you get the fold, and you get the stuff, and you get the.
Yeah, we're nowhere near.
No.
Going here. Scan this, go do it.
I don't wanna put something in there and, and they're gonna be keep looking, 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 and in four months, they don't see you, they're, they're gonna get discouraged.
Exactly.
So, remind me where Stratford is.
Over there. No, it's over there Rochester.
Not Stratford.
Right.
Stratford's up north.
So what's the total population of Stratford?
Stratford, not very big, it's over.
It says on there a thing, I thought.
They're over, they're over between Bonstadt.
Exeter?
Yeah.
Long Route four.
They're over Bonstadt, along Route four, Bonstadt, backside of Northwood, Rochester.
Right.
Yeah. There's not a lot over there at Stratford. The military took over that school over there, the National Guard, there's a training facility and other than that, there's not a whole lot.
It's a bedroom community for U N H.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, the observation I made about, I like the way this is laid out, I don't know how they generated it. But the concern I had about ours is similar concern about theirs. You know, three hundred and seventy-one people participated. Same, we got just over three hundred participating.
Eight thousand.
Yeah.
No.
So it's not even ten percent. So how can you? Yeah, but it's, it's typical, but then you make decisions on the people who share, make a, you know, input. And then the other people who didn't put the input sit around and complain.
Well.
You know, and so.
But I think a lot of it is you're gonna give the ability to do it right here like this.
Correct, right.
While they eat lunch, they could do it while they're on bus, they could do it.
The other thing that we wanna be careful of is if that's the, the case, it's only one and done. It's not like, you know, you're gonna go and try to win raffle tickets, so you're gonna have fifty million applications to win a raffle ticket. You wanna have it, once they submit it.
So you do the survey monkey thing, they only allow one response per email address. So you do the survey monkey thing, they only allow one response per email address.
Okay. What if you're like me, you've got five emails.
Or phone number.
You'll make up for the people who don't.
Maybe we do, okay, with those excellent-
There must be a way to do it by phone number, they gotta do it with a cellphone.
Yeah.
So Stratford's over in the Dover Dermal?
Yeah.
Rochester, yeah, borders Rochester.
One thousand, one thousand three hundred and twenty-nine people.
Forty-two, forty-three.
So half the people we do.
Yeah.
A little bit less.
It's a rural community, I can tell you that, I've been, I was stationed over there for a while.
So it's not like you're a big time-
It's more females than males, just so you know.
Okay. The other piece of the puzzle that we, we probably need to do, this is important, that we need to put these questions together, et cetera. But the other piece of the puzzle, puzzle is the, the educational piece that has nothing to do with the survey. Is that we need to have a public hearing that explains why we're doing this and that the state's expecting this, this isn't something that we're dreaming up, we need your participation.
Kind of thinking we can do it, we get the question, if we get the questions together for us, get the survey put together, and then we can do that public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I mean, just wanna have that part of the puzzle, not to leave that out to say that, well, oops, now let's have it thought of at the beginning rather than doing the oops.
And we also, at that point perhaps, have people give us some ideas of what they think. For example, I keep seeing thriving downtown area being referred to in different places, I think including in our master plan. What do you, what does that mean?
A sidewalk going in front of the school.
I mean, if, if you're looking at Goffstown Village, or you're looking at Franklin, Tilton, those were mill towns that had a reason to have a downtown, and we don't have that.
Right, that's right, we don't have that reason.
What do you expect, what do you think of thriving downtown is, I think is important to get feedback on as well, and perhaps that comes at the public hearing or not. But thriving downtown, that to me, I need specifics, what, what does that mean to people here? Specifically in the context of here, right, right here, where is it gonna be? What do you see there, you know?
Thriving, yeah, thriving downtown, it's mostly a drive-through between here and Hennecker here and along one fourteen Goffstown.
Yeah, I mean, those were all small, I don't know about Hennecker, but a lot of them are small mill communities.
Hennecker's got more of a main street, more of a thriving community, I guess you would say for downtown. I mean, they got more, more of the main street here, I mean, it's most of it out.
But see, then, so then-
Everybody says we want a thriving downtown, right, I think it's even in our existing master plan, what does that mean? Tell me what that means for the planner.
It doesn't mean anything because historically we've never had one.
Right.
Because our identity is in smaller villages amongst, you got Riverdale, you got Ware Center, you've got North Ware, which you can spit to. Um, then you've got Clayton Grove, and then you've got East Ware that's underwater, and you've got all these places that, you know, Slab City, which is not even a mile and a half from my house, it's a whole different understanding of culture and, and and understanding of what, why it's called that, and then you have the river. And the river historically was the industry of the town, you know, when it was noted as the toy factory place to, and then you've got your chickens. And we've never really been a dairy community, it's been chickens. You know, I can have Steve Flander sit here and talk for hours on chickens. And that's what you did, but we're not that now anymore. And to expect, we don't have the infrastructure to build a downtown. You know, we're not like, when I was in Nigeria, they relocated this capital from Lagos, then smack dab in the middle of the country in wasteland, there was nothing there, and they just built this new capital.
I've been there.
At Bucha, yeah, it's, it's unbelievable, driving up, nothing, nothing happens. But I agree, there's-
Yeah, I'm just looking for more specifics because we-
Right, okay, so that means we're gonna ask those specific questions, but we, we want to-
But it can come at public hearing, if we're gonna have a big meeting and use the middle school, if that's what the thought is. If we're gonna have that time and take that time, we should ask, I, I think.
Well, ti- timing is important. We're leaning towards making this somewhat happen without funding.
Oh, yeah.
So if there's an opportunity for us to do funding,
I know.
Then we need to look at timing of when we present such so that the community understands why it's necessary to fund. And that won't happen until next March. Right? But that would have to be concluded by the middle of January in order to get on warrant.
December's better.
December's better, how about November?
Even better, even better.
Sooner than later.
But if that's the way we're going, but if we can generate this whole process electronically, it's gonna only cost Naomi monkey time. Survey monkey time, no, she, she'll give that to somebody else, but-
So I'm gonna ask you a question.
All right.
Out of those seconds that you had.
Yep. On, on our current one?
Right.
Right, I don't think transportation is-
Well, we've got kind of a transportation thing going on already.
Right.
They started a little-
But even then, it's, it means-
So I don't think we need to address that.
No.
It's more mainly-
So we need a profile.
That, that was at least targeted towards elderly transportation.
Recreation elderly.
So I, I don't know that it would preclude the entire category, but it definitely covers a pretty good chunk of it.
Right, but the-
What kind of a return did you get on that questionnaire?
Three hundred and forty-eight.
Three forty-eight?
Mm-hmm.
That's not too powerful.
Better than what I would, I mean, we would hope for five, but we got three forty on.
And, but if we can do this electronically and make it really easy, we may get more on.
Well, I mean, they pulled out all the stops for that one, and it was electronic and also paper and came to, came to, you know, the voting booths and-
Yeah, I know.
And postcard, they could do a QR code with.
You can lead a horse to water.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I don't know that making it easy is going to-
True.
All right, so, so if we go back to look at our master plan, so I imagine you've looked at our questions.
See, you guys don't have this, right? Chuck, do you have that?
What is that?
This was the original one that was-
Survey.
The survey.
Yeah, I have it.
You don't. Jack, you have it?
No, I don't.
And when you're talking about timing, it's also worth thinking about if it has to go through C I P, the amount of money, and that would be, and then you're talking-
I know, I don't, I don't think we'll, we'll, we'll be ready for that. I mean, I think, I think it's worth to get that up. C I P starts in like September, August.
Right.
Yeah. September, October.
So out of, so- So the first official category is transportation in the questionnaire from last time. Is that maybe not as extensive or? Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
This was sent years ago, only in two thousand and one.
How long have you been changing?
No, I said so. No, we're based upon the report, which I don't believe it's a plan, it's a report. The last section is a plan as to who's responsible to do what, but we're like twelve thousand, not twelve thousand, twelve, twenty-five hundred people sure of what they projected.
What they projected.
They projected, I think, twelve.
Nine thousand and ninety, I think, nine thousand and ninety-two is what we're at.
I, I don't think, I don't, we need to worry about that too much, at this point in time. We're obviously not gonna go one, building one sidewalks or get a bus service in town.
Well, we get a bus service.
No, but some of those resources are already being provided that people aren't aware of. And that's the issue that you need to contact, you know, any cares ministry from a church, any cares ministry from local transportation groups. All those things are resources avail- available. I'm not sure if people like Uber and provide that type of discounted transportation for seniors, I imagine, but I don't know that. But that's all we've been doing for the last month. Driving people to doctor's appointments.
I mean, riding Uber.
Yeah.
What are you doing?
It's free, but, you know, but it, that's what happens as a pastor, you just fill in the blanks. Or the congregation stepping up, and there's multiple people doing that, so anybody, there's not anybody in our congregation or even our spheres of influence who don't, shouldn't have transportation. Someone will give you a ride, just let, sneak up, ask.
I think that's a part of the problem, that you're coming to survey.
Well, I'll make an anecdotal observation, that I have some people who go to the hospital and be there for two weeks and then come home, and a week later tell me they've been in the hospital three weeks earlier. Because they're too private, don't want to. But then again, sometimes that's the person who complains the most, but nobody cared. Well, how can, you know, it's not my habit to call the hospital, so do I get any congregants. Well, if they're not, tell me they're there, they're not gonna tell them who they're connected with. And then even then, that whole parish philosophy has changed drastically too. So that you don't really want pastors showing up anymore, because it's none of your business type of thing, but-
So I guess it's homework, we really just, everybody should work on what, what questions they think need to go in the questionnaire.
Well, that's what I challenged us to do last time, so-
And, sorry.
I don't have time to answer the phone sometimes.
The other part of the transportation too is, we don't really, you know, we're disconnected in such ways, not meaning people, I mean, we're fragmented, I should say, it's better to get someone in.
Well, here's the- Here's, here's the answer to that, we should get the report.
We don't have a real community center, so to speak, like some towns do, that-
Can we request the report to be given to us from that?
So what they asked yesterday, I went over and met at hand in hand, and they've asked to come to selectmen with a report, because they're compiling all the-
So that came from hand in hand?
Uh, it's, no, no, he and I worked with Helena hand in hand, and that was with Southerners Planning. They're the ones who's crunched all the surveys. But, I mean, it's, it was interesting, it was telling. The population, the ages of those that need help, and those that don't want anybody to help them. Do you think you'll need a ride, do you know someone that needs a ride, they don't know somebody, but, you know, it's, it's a very different-
Yeah.
World.
Well, it's typical of a rural community where you've got a fortress mentality regardless of how big your lot is. This is my castle.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we plan, we plan on sharing it anyways, just because we like the selectmen.
Okay, well, it'd be helpful for us to-
Yeah, the selectmen should know they were supportive to let us do it, and let's see where it is, and I think it's worthwhile as to what it came out. Um, and I think it would be very helpful for you guys to see what, what came out.
Yeah.
You know, and where the age group, where those that did the survey, we broke down to areas of town, you know, where the most of the area needed rides and where, you know, it was, it was interesting how you could really play with and almost narrow things down.
Right.
Were you looking for twenty general questions, or have you figured out?
I think that we wanna, we wanna, well, I think we can, if, if everybody could put together like thirty questions, and then we'll narrow it down.
From, from Stratford?
From everything we've got here from Stratford, from where, from, the stuff that we've put together. We got a couple, a couple from Amherst, one commercial, one residential.
You got one from Stratford, you got one from Hampstead, you got two from Amherst, but you got a business one and a residential one.
Right, correct, right.
That's all that.
Which may be part of the plan to do two different ones, because the original one does have a business aspect, but-
Right.
If we get thirty questions, then maybe we can pull them out to separate them from commercial to residential.
When's the deadline?
For the thirty questions.
Correct.
Next meeting, meeting after?
Next meeting. Well, we're gonna, we're gonna-
All right, when you're here.
So we have a work session first, June?
June, June thirteenth.
June thirteenth.
So thirty questions, June thirteenth.
Okay, so then, if you can email them beforehand, that'd be awesome. See, yeah, then she can email them to me. I don't know why, why can't you?
Because we don't wanna, we don't wanna-
We can't be a meeting?
We can't have a discussion, yeah.
Non-pollute discussion, we don't wanna do that.
Is that, yeah, is that email?
Don't, don't send in the morning of June thirteenth.
Oh, come on.
So that's, that's Thursday, so how much?
Eleven thirty, eleven twelve, I was at.
Eleven?
At night?
If you guys could get them by that weekend or Monday, um, we could, we just kinda put something together.
What's the, what's the date now again?
June thirteenth.
That's when you wanna see these?
No, I'd like to see them June first.
June, oh.
Go.
Okay.
June twelve at eleven thirty at night.
Chuck, by June tenth, add a zero to the one.
No, June first, then you can have a little give towards the tenth.
So I have a plan for everybody?
Yep.
Yes.
But we have to make sure that if we do get four conceptuals or merger, that we're gonna stay until those questions are hammered, hammered out.
I don't like the off-
Does that mean we?
No, because it seems like we say we're gonna do something and then we go and talk about what we were supposed to do and didn't do it. So at least maybe hammer through half of them.
Yeah, I'm hoping you won't have the conceptuals, because maybe we'll get someone on board that you wouldn't need to do that.
Okay.
You won't, you wouldn't have seen the three if we had somebody to make that determination.
Oh, okay, I understand.
So, with that would be solved, you still don't have to see the merger, and the merger go to the next time, but
Yeah, so where's it? Yeah, yeah.
The conceptuals, what I got from you guys was to put them on, don't hold them up, and that's why we did it.
Yep. Well, I'm not complaining, and you, sometimes we have no control over those things, so.
In other words, be prepared to burn the midnight oil.
Yeah, if we have to. So take a nap and-
Don't put the whammy on us.
Okay, next minute.
You guys had it for April eleventh.
April eleventh.
Okay, uh, we're, yeah, we weren't planning on talking about it quite yet anyway.
Okay.
But that'd be good to get on the agenda next week, or next, next meeting.
Next week and go, send them to you.
Go forward. I didn't hear what you asked for the conference, what did you ask about?
Oh, about the engineering. Oh, about the engineering, R P.
Yeah, we got the legal one ready to go, it's gonna work tomorrow.
Our brief back and forth was, try and get it on the planning, the next planning agenda to discuss it. And then we'd be able to do it at the board agenda, selectmen agenda, with the planning input after the next planning meeting.
Thirteenth.
That's, you know, okay with everybody?
If you do thirteen, you can get on our seventh meeting.
Seventeenth, the seventeenth, the, um, public hearing day?
Okay, we get it done then.
Okay.
If you got legal was gone through, and we were, and we go through it, then it should be, shouldn't be too bad, huh, year like that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think so.
Everybody have an issue with the minutes? Frank, and Paulson?
Move to approved minutes, uh, April's eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second anyone? Frank second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain.
Abstain, wasn't he?
Two extensions.
So, it's three?
One, two, sorry, three, two.
Three, yep, three, yep, two.
I'll head down, man, I'm focused. Everybody have anything else they would like to bring up, the stuffs?
Just a very quick, uh, thank you to Selectman Matthews, who stood as my alternate for the first two of these meetings, this is the first one I've been to, um, it's pretty interesting. I look forward to being more.
We'll sweep the final vote now.
Making one for me to judge.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.